Eric, how are you?
Good.
Good.
We'll start as we always do with silent prayer. And then afterward, if you could stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. I normally ask you to pray for something, but there's so much that we could pray for. So if you could just take a minute for silent prayer. Amen. Thank you.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Sumner Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Our next order of business is a proclamation recognizing Ohio Loves Transit Week 2022. Commissioner Drehouse, would you like to say something before we get started?
Sure. And Darrell Haley is here. He's the CEO of Sorta. Darrell, would you come forward so that we can sing your praises right here at the? Yep, yep. So it's, everybody does love transit. I think we showed that with the last vote, with the levy going in place. And this in part was prompted by the signing ceremony that just happened, where all the 23 jurisdictions that got infrastructure dollars from the levy, 25% of the levy was set aside for infrastructure. 23 communities applied and 23 communities got dollars. So that, I'm not sure that's going to happen again, but anyway, it did this time. And so they were very excited about the jumpstart now that they can have with some of these infrastructure projects in places all over the county. I mean, all these different jurisdictions, they were pretty excited about being there. And it was quite the celebration. And the Western Hills Viaduct was also, of course, included on that list. So it is Transit Week, and so I thought it might be appropriate to celebrate transit. So that's why we have the proclamation in front of us. And Madam President, I'll leave it to you to start.
Thank you so much. I'll start with the proclamation. Whereas Ohio's 68 urban and rural public transit agencies, which serve 70 counties across the state, will observe the Fourth Annual Ohio Loves Transit Week, February 13 through February 19, 2022. And whereas during this week, transit agencies sponsor events and activities to encourage ridership and to educate the public, elected officials, community leaders, and the media about the many contributions that public transportation makes to Ohio's economy and to the quality of life in communities across the state. And whereas transit systems and their courageous employees have continually demonstrated the essential role they play in the communities they served during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Cincinnati Metro and Access Para-Transit Services enhance the quality of life in Hamilton County by providing reliable, affordable, and convenient mobility services and...
And whereas 500,000 Ohioans depend on public transit every day to get to work and medical appointments, shopping centers, parks, libraries, entertainment venues, and countless other destinations. And whereas Ohio's public transit agencies provide more than 93 million rides per year, including more than 14,800,000 rides for seniors and people with disabilities. Whereas public transportation in Ohio is a $1 billion industry that directly employs 7,480 people and creates tens of thousands of private sector jobs. And whereas nearly $1 billion invested in public transit generates 3.6 billion in economic activity in Ohio each year.
And whereas public transit's development and deployment of vehicles powered by alternative fuels, including natural gas produced in Ohio, protects the environment, reduces America's reliance on foreign oil, and has enabled the state to become a national leader in green energy R&amp;D, investment, and job creation. And whereas the existence of robust public transit service has become a prerequisite for companies seeking to expand or relocate facilities and/or operations. And whereas public transit's continued commitment to provide the mobility services Ohioans want, need, and deserve is worthy of recognition. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize February 13 through February 20, or February 19, 2022, as Ohio Loves Transit Week to celebrate and acknowledge the importance of public transit in our community by order of all three county commissioners.
I'll just like to say thank you to each one of you for your support of transit in our community and all the hard work that it took to get issue seven passed. Thank you to the members of Hamilton County, the citizens of Hamilton County. We are really excited about what we are building, and we look forward to the transit system of the future. And without your hard work, we wouldn't be where we are today. So I want to say thank you to each one of you. Thank you. We'll take a picture.
Right here. Thank you, everyone.
Our next order of business is public comments. I don't have any cards, but is there anyone on the computer on the Zoom? Okay.
Ms. Davis, you have the privilege of the floor for two minutes.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, we met with Commissioner Drehouse about a week ago, and it was a very productive conversation. Ms. Drehouse is always very responsive to the residents in the county concerning the solid waste landfill. And we had asked to be reckoned that our group, the Solid Waste Caucus, comprised of Ditch the Dump, the Sierra Club, League of Women's Voters, Child Advocacy for Rights and Equity, and OXPO, be recognized by the Board of Commissioners and be given authority and powers to address boards, commissions, and committees to convey to them the concerns of the public. And then I saw, excuse me, I saw that there was a public notice put out in the paper from the Solid Waste Committee. And despite us expressing concerns about being excluded and our issues not being heard, this notice about the solid waste update and all the revisions and plans and new programming we want, the, the public notice restricts the public largely to discussing issues that the staff wants to talk about instead of the very important issues that the residents want to talk about. And this is just emblematic of a continuing problem with the solid waste management staff who will not allow us to effectively participate. So I sent an email to Ms. Marsh this morning asking that the board today recognize us as a group and grant us the power to specifically address issues and put to the agenda and request votes on the issues that our organization, which we represent over 10,000 people now, and we are being locked out by the staff in regards to participating in the update of the solid waste plan. And we need a little help.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, for calling in. And I'm sure that Commissioner Drehouse will alert the other commissioners as it relates to bringing something forward or not. But I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we will move forward. No other one on there, Bridgette, no one else? Okay, so comments and motions by commissioners, I have a few comments today. And we talked about transportation, but he did leave. But I had a great virtual meeting with Council on Aging Suzanne Burke as it relates to transportation and improvement of transportation for those seniors who are in desperate need for transportation. And we are well aware that the two major players in this game, they carry so many people, 6,000 apiece, that it's almost impossible if we even wanted to replace them. But we are getting individual providers to come in and provide services. So she's working very hard and install a new data system to keep up with whether or not people, the drivers are arriving on time, how the ones, the clients that are receiving the service, how they feel about the service. And I'm just really excited about the new things that are going to come forth for the senior citizen population or those that are disabled. I want to bring up the Cincinnati Bengals. Who Day? I didn't, yeah. But I want, Bridgette is going to show you one thing. We, of course, declared the Bengals Super Bowl Day, their, their day. And that's a picture of, we did raise a flag in honor of them, and we did not show it. So I just wanted to share that the county did raise a flag in their honor. We're still so very proud of them. We're proud of the owners. Thank you, Bridgette. The coaches, the players for shining a light on this region and the belief that they can do, as long as they work hard. And that's for everybody, and they did not lose their determination. And we are just so proud of them as a county. And I went to the rally yesterday at Washington Park, and it was awesome. The, the coach was there, Mike Brown was there, the governor was there. And it was just a great time. I'm looking, looking forward to the future of the Bengals. I will move on to a couple other comments I have. As we know, this is Black History Month. And I have on red, black, and green. And the reason for that, people have often asked the African-American flag and the meaning of that. And the red stands for, when you see the flag flying, so you'll have, you'll be educated on this. The red is the blood that unites all people of Black African ancestry that they shed for liberation. The black is for the people whose existence as a nation, though not a nation-state, is affirmed by the existence of the flag. And the green is abundant and vibrant natural wealth of Africa, the motherland. So when people ask you, you can tell them that you have an idea or understanding of what those, what the flag means. And just in general, since Black History, it is this month. I've said before, last week, Black History is American history. Take time to know people of a different race or a different ethnicity. We know that racism still does exist. A lot of it is because of fear, false evidence appearing real. I believe that knowledge is power. The more that you know about someone, the more that you want to know. We can't live our lives with blinders on. According to the 2020 census, the white population has declined 8.6% since 2010. Multiracial population has increased 276%. The Black African-American population accounted for 12.4% living in the United States, which is 46.9 million. So our numbers are increasing. You know, I remember, I won't, I won't state the date because I didn't bring that with me, but there will be more brown and black people in the United States. And so we have to just get to know each other, get to know people for who they are, not by the color of their skin. Lastly, as it relates to Black History, just a few things that you can tell your friends about. There are so many Black inventors, and I said this last week, that I would talk about just a few of them, and then next week I'll talk about a few more. It's really difficult to imagine a world without the many inventions that are done by Black people. And just a few, the folding cabinet bed. You know, when you see on I Love Lucy, that bed in the wall, and it comes down and all of that. In 1885, Sarah Good became the first Black woman to receive a U.S. patent. She moved to Chicago and opened a furniture store. It was there she came up with an industry-changing idea that brought more urban residents with limited space into her store. Potato chips. George Crumb in 1853 in Sarasota, New York. He was actually a chef in a restaurant. People were complaining about how thick the potatoes were. So he tried to make the potatoes as thinly as possible, fried them until they were burnt crisp, and threw a generous handful of salt on top. Thus, the chip was born. Just a couple more. The gas mask. Garrett Morgan developed what he called the safety hood after noticing how many firefighters were being killed by smoke on the job. The hood, which went over his head, featured tubes connected to wet sponges that filtered out smoke and provided fresh oxygen. And lastly, for this week, protective mailbox. Philip B. Downing created a mailbox design that featured an outer door and an inner safety door to provide, to avoid parcels being stolen. This safety device allowed mailboxes to be set up everywhere in the United States. I'm going to do one more. Charles Richard Drew. He became interested in researching the preservation of blood when he was studying at Columbia University. Drew discovered a method of separating red blood cells from plasma and then storing the two components separately. This new process allowed blood to be stored for more than a week, which was a maximum at that time. Drew documented these findings in a paper that led to the first blood bank. So those are just a few, and you're welcome to get on the internet and read up more, and I'll give you some more next week. So that will end my comments for today. I did want to mention that I was at the Free Store Food Bank and helped pack up some boxes last Friday for people right before the Super Bowl. And it was, just felt really good. Kroger's was there, and they gave out a $33,000 check to the food bank. And so I thanked them for inviting me. Okay, Vice President Reese.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Some of the things that I was going to mention, you have mentioned that I had a chance to be at as well, I think all three of us, at the Free Store Food Bank in World Hunger Initiative. And I think they had one, Kroger's was in Cincinnati, and they also had one in LA. If I'm not mistaken, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, I think we did more boxes. We beat LA on that one. But it was great to be there with my two colleagues as well. And yesterday, certainly the AFC Championship Celebration yesterday at Washington Park. I was happy to also be a part of that and be a part of the Who Day Nation that was in full swing. Want to also acknowledge the Who Day Nation that has been all over and has been traveling as well as being here. They were meeting the team when they came home back from, from LA, and it was cold, very, very cold. But when they got back, they had a lot of the Who Day Nation out there welcoming them back home. I want to just congratulate the team on, I think, a very good year. I think, obviously, we fell short of our goal to win the Super Bowl, but I think Dewayne Johnson said it best at the Super Bowl when he introduced both teams. When he introduced us, he said, "The Cincinnati Bengals, who have risen from the ashes." Most people, you know, that's, you know, my father has a saying. His whole saying is, "He came from the bottom up." But to rise from the ashes, which is a story of so many of our citizens, our small businesses, at a time when it's just been tough for us, a very tough two years, and to rise when everyone said you couldn't make it and get all the way to the Super Bowl is something to definitely be commended to the team in what they, what they did and not, not stop believing in themselves when people said, "You just can't do it." They kept believing they could. So I want to thank them for that, bringing them. Our county was brought together everywhere we went, and I hope that we keep that spirit. The colors were black and orange. It wasn't about your political party and all of those things. It was about, we on the same team. And it's our team against their team. And I just hope that we keep that. Everywhere I went, I heard people saying, "Who Day." We're greeting people that we don't even know, was a common language called Who Day. We are hugging and high-fiving and smiling again for, we haven't had a lot of things to smile for in a long time. So I hope we keep that energy as we move forward as a county. Yeah, we are one Hamilton County, and I think we showed that. People who didn't even know anything about football were screaming, "Who Day." It was about our team. And it didn't matter if you were in the suburban part or if you were in the inner-city part. It didn't matter if you were in Cincinnati or if you're in a village or township, we were all together. And to me, I think that's what I love the most about it. So I just want to echo that again and to say, we still are screaming, "Who Day." In addition, Black History Month, and I do want to thank President Dumas. Before I got here, when she came down, she instituted a program to honor African-Americans. So when I was at the city, we always did at the city, but the county had never done anything like this. And it gave us a chance to honor each year African-Americans that are right from here. You don't have to go in a history book, you can touch these folks. And the, the work that they were able to do and the changes that they have done and continue to make. And then this year, I got a chance, I think this week, their days where Fannie Mallory Day was this week, and Carl Westmoreland Day was this week. And certainly, we have others. But I want to say how important that is because we need to make sure that people can see some of these history makers. They're right in front of us. And a lot of times, we don't acknowledge them because they're here, and we just say, "Oh, well, they just do what they do." But they have made an impact, along with so many others of our ancestors who came before us. I want to acknowledge, from, from my perspective, I went to Grambling State University where I graduated from. And a lot of people, Joe Burrow and Jamar Chase, they went to LSU down in Louisiana. And so I kind of relate to them in terms of, you know, what they like to eat, that crawfish and the gumbo and the jambalaya. And I think they bring a lot of that to the field. But Grambling State University, I wouldn't be here today with a degree from Grambling State if it wasn't for, starting with Booker T. Washington that started Tuskegee Institute. There were Black farmers in Louisiana that owned land and said, "Education is important." But they didn't know how to do a school. So they summons Booker T. Washington. And Booker T. Washington said, "I'm busy here at Tuskegee in Alabama, but I got my number-two guy trained. His name is Charles P. Adams. I will send him down to Louisiana." Charles P. Adams went down to Louisiana with the land that was owned by the Black farmers. And he put together the curriculum and started Grambling College, which is now known as Grambling State University. Many, many decades later, I got a chance to graduate from Grambling State University and play on the basketball team and be a SWAC championship player. I got a chance to serve as Miss Grambling State University, but there are thousands who have graduated from that university. These are the types of stories and an impact that Black history is being made. When I was at Grambling, Black history was every day because the domitories are named after people like PBS Pinchback, the first Black governor of Louisiana. I didn't learn it in the book. I learned it because I knew it was a domitor. And so these are the type of things that are important, the inventors and those kind of things, so that other people that look like me and look like President Dumas can feel as though, wait a minute, we can do something big. We can contribute. We come from people who have contributed. And what makes it history is not what they have done, but the odds and the obstacles that they had to overcome to actually do it. Charles drew what he did with blood transfusion, but then he himself needed a blood transfusion and was unable to because of the color of his own skin. These are the type of stories that exist and should be, should be told and should be understood so that the next generations can go even further than we have gone. So I'm excited about always celebrating Black History this month and every other month of the year as it is, has always been in my household. Also, I wanted to say, for this month, I want to thank the School of Creative and Performing Arts, Ms. Callaway, for inviting me to be a part of her Black History Program at Creative Performing Arts and got a chance to talk to the students there. That was great this week. I will be speaking to eighth and 12th graders this, this Saturday with Jack and Jill Organization at the University of Cincinnati. I'm looking forward to that. And hopefully, I could pass something along that will help these young ladies in their lives as they move forward. Want to also say that I did get a chance to meet with our administrator and looking forward to it, to have a presentation being made, hopefully, from Ms. Lisa Webb on the $1 million that we put in the budget and was passed for senior citizens to be able to get help with their furnaces, their heating and cooling, but also help with their utilities. We'll have a senior initiative because they are not able, they were not eligible for some of the other programs we have. And some of those other programs, they almost, you almost got to be destitute to get some help. This will go into the gap and be allowing these seniors to be able to get this type of help that they need. In addition, there will also be a program for African-American and other minority seniors to make sure that they understand what these programs are and how to better connect them. So I'm looking forward to Ms. Lisa Webb presenting that to us. I think we all received the proposal so that we could get moving on that and be able to help these seniors. And I'm very excited about having that added. Also, wanted to say, congratulations to Chief, Cincinnati Police Chief Elliot Isaac. He'll be retiring tomorrow. Here's someone else who came from our community, came from the bottom, moved all the way up, and has been our police chief. He's retiring tomorrow, and we will have Lieutenant Teresa... And we will have Lieutenant Teresa, is it Thiget? I always get, Fiji, I'm always getting her name, last name wrong, Fiji. I've been, I've had a chance to interact with her. She will make history tomorrow. It's the first female to lead the City of Cincinnati Police Department. And of course, at the Sheriff's Department, we have our first female sheriff. So some new, some new folks in town. We're excited about that, so congratulations to, to both of them. And then lastly, the Cincinnati Music Festival is back. It will be back, they announced their lineup is returning, and certainly, I know a lot of people are excited about that. It brings in over $100 million of economic impacts, and we definitely are excited about it as well. Janet Jackson and Charlie Wilson will be leading it. So it will be a Rhythm Nation coming all the way to the Who Day Nation, and it will happen at Paul Brown Stadium. You know, I'm always outside of sales, I got to sell to the county, we try to sell it, come on, get your rooms. And we're looking forward to connecting it with our Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. So we're excited about that, Madam President. I just wanted to put that out, they announced it yesterday, and I know we've been doing a lot with the Bengals, and so people might have missed that announcement. But tickets are flying off the shelves, I hear, and hotel rooms are ready to get booked. So again, they can go online and get that information. The Cincinnati Music Festival, the oldest African-American music festival in the nation, is back, and we're excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Madam President, I have a couple of comments, the first of which is to an introduction. Chris Harding has joined my office as the Public Affairs Director, he's in the audience, welcome, Chris. I did walk him around, so those of you that were in your offices got to meet him. And those of you that weren't in your offices will get to meet him. So he's a great asset to the office, I'm thrilled to have him. He came over from the courthouse and is really looking forward to working with all of us to move the county forward and the work of the county forward. So thanks, Chris, for being here, and thanks for coming over. I was going to mention, we, we spent a lot of time together in the last few days. So we all did Zero Hunger, Zero Waste at the Free Store Food Bank. Kroger generously offered the check for $33,000, and it was just a great experience, a little hands-on experience for all three of us to help people in need of food, with food insecurity. So really excited about doing that. And also, it was part of the pep rally yesterday. I think probably the last hurrah for all of the Who Day celebrations. But it, it was really exciting to be in such a crowd that was so fired up about the Bengals. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I got one comment that, you know, what are we doing throwing a celebration for a team that lost? That is not how, I don't think any of us feel about the Bengals at the moment. We are thrilled that they brought so much energy and excitement to this community and went to the Super Bowl. I mean, no small achievement. So I say no to the naysayers and say, you know, we, we were well within our purview to celebrate the Bengals and the, the owners and the coaches and everybody else that was there, it was really exciting. Lastly, I went to an event, represented the commission down at the annual memorial walk for William Henry Harrison down in North Bend, Ohio. William Henry Harrison was the ninth president of the United States. He is buried in North Bend, Ohio. And so they do this memorial walk up to the tomb, and there is a wreath-laying ceremony where people are in period dress and they celebrate the life and times of William Henry Harrison. And I've, I've been doing this since I was a state rep, when I used to represent that area. And so I went down, and it was a lovely celebration. And I just want to thank the organizers, Bev in particular, for year after year in the freezing cold, getting enough people to walk that route. There were schoolkids there, there was a band playing, it was really fun. So thank you to them for the constant reminder that we are home to presidents, and we should celebrate that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our administrator, Jeff Aluto.
Thank you, Madam President. No comments today, I may have some comments as we get into our hearing on sidewalks. But there is just one by-leave item today in your packet, that is by-leave item number one. I'll defer to Commissioner Drehouse if you would like to enter it.
Well, thank you. This is a resolution appointing Chris Harding to the Office of the Board of County Commissioners, and so I will move approval of the resolution.
So moved. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you.
And thank you, Madam. Thank you all, I look forward to working with all of your offices as we go forward. I know I've gotten the chance to meet many of you in the past couple of years and look forward to our continued engagement.
Thank you, appreciate it.
President, no further by-leaves.
Thank you so much, we will move forward to our public hearing. Mr. Eric Beck is here. A hearing to consider the 2021-2022 Sidewalk Repair Replacement Program, project number hashtag 502201.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the second of, of two hearings to allow the public to express any concerns with the sidewalk replacement program. The property owners, we've been in contact with numerous times over the past year as we've been putting this program together. And I'm, I'm not sure if there's anybody here to make any comments, and that's the purpose of the hearing.
Sure, we'll make sure no one's on the zone for the sidewalk repair and replacement. Okay, thank you.
Okay, should there be not, since there's no, no comments, I would recommend that the, the board would close the hearing for public comments. I know we, Commissioner Reese has expressed some concerns about how we might make some other funding options available to cover this. Closing the hearing, we will not proceed with any, bringing a resolution forward to proceed with the sidewalk until we resolve those questions. We've been working with administration on those. So my recommendation is to close the hearing, and then we will continue working towards that goal and bring something to a staff meeting at a later date. We've been working with Jeff, I don't know if Jeff wants to add anything on that.
Thank you, Engineer Beck. No, I think you hit it perfectly, I think closing the hearing today does not prevent us from continuing to work this particular program alternative. We'll come back to the board in a couple of weeks, probably, in a staff meeting with some thoughts on programmatic ideas for programs to help residences finance sidewalks, determine at that point in time whether the board would like to move forward with something. Regardless of what that answer is, yes or no, we could then subsequently bring forward a resolution advancing the 2021-2022 sidewalk program, either in concert with or without, whatever, at the discretion of the board, a separate program to subsidize that, that work.
Thank you. And there were numerous entities that had this program at one time. I know they have stopped, like, I know Forest Park had it, they don't have it anymore. So I think it's great to look at programmatic options during a staff meeting and maybe even incentives for those who have it to maybe be helpful to them. Any other discussion before I close the hearing?
Yes, I just want to thank you for looking into that and look forward to it. I think it would be great to have it all together. That way, we kind of have all of the facts, and we can then look at what's the best decision, having it together. But I do appreciate you, Mr. Beck, and Administrator Aluto for being able to look into those items and bring it back forward to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And then we have our engineers here for our regular agenda item, we have one item.
Thank you, and I would like to follow up on your Black History Month. Your, one of your gentlemen that you mentioned, Mr. Garrett Morgan, invented the gas mask. He also invented the three-position traffic signal that we still use today, the red, yellow, green. So I, I was familiar with his name and, and his accomplishments.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a, the resolution in front of you is a joint agreement between Hamilton County and the Board of Trustees of Miami Township for construction and maintenance of improvements to Cliff Road Slips located in Miami Township, project number 502105. Construction cost is $261,629. This allows us to partner with Miami Township, who has obtained, in conjunction with our office, OPWC funds in the amount of $237,771, or 48% of the project. This will allow us to move forward with getting the construction plans ready and letting a project to correct the landslides on Cliff Road.
Right, and I love when we can leverage our money and other people's money also at the same time. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I make a motion to adopt resolution number one.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yeah, before you consent agenda items, number two through 15, some of the items within the consent agenda under administration is approval of some purchase orders, replacement vehicle for the sheriff, and one budget adjustment. Under environmental, we have an innovation grant that went to a church, Church on Fire Ministries. And HCDC has an enterprise agreement that's included in the consent agenda. JFS has several items for youth, two boys' homes that need to be funded, two group home services, and two foster care services. Any comments on the consent agenda items? Vice President Reese?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Item number five, the budget adjustment. I just had one question on the budget adjustment. It talks about a additional property tax and parking operations. Maybe, can the administrator talk about that?
So this is a budget adjustment allocating additional dollars for, for property taxes. We do have certain parcels that we continue to pay property tax on, that sometimes we get exemptions for, for parking. Those exemptions roll, roll off typically if it's a surface lot. So in this particular case, John, I don't know if, if you know exactly the parcel that it is.
It's always a little bit of a guess as to how much our property taxes are going to be. We're like everybody else in the county, we don't know how much we're charging. But the, I believe this is related to the, I'm sorry, the, the, the West End, the West Side Garage coming online.
So, so property taxes are being paid for the, for, there will, will likely apply for and achieve typically a, an exemption for structured parking. But if there is a period of time when we own the property, when it does not apply for, does not allow for an exemption, we are still liable for the property taxes for that, so if it's that.
So we owed more than we thought we were going to owe. Ultimately, the exemption will come through, and we'll have a rebate coming in the years ahead.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation. I just, you know, people see this, they say, you know, we pay property taxes too, and a lot of times, you know, even when we were looking at this impervious surface fee and all of that, I've been asking, would that be, will we have to be paying for those? We got lots ourselves. So this is another example of just keeping our eye on. These are things that we would have to pay, and ultimately, it's the taxpayers that, that pay those things. So thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. No further discussion. I make a motion to approve items two through 15.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, and I would like to, to thank Vicki and Caroline, who's back there doing the sign, signing for us today. At this point, I make a motion to a John?
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.